Yeah, let's put the big idea of the board discussion so people don't have to get through the media longer than that.
Yep.
Yep. Of any non candidacy. And actually, since my eyes are not as stellar as they were in my youth.
I got you.
Nobody's raising their hand.
Yeah, if someone just wants to shout out, otherwise sounds like we don't have anyone. All right, great.
There is, there is.
Where? Oh, okay.
Kristin.
Kristin, yes. Okay.
Hi, how are you? My name is Kristin. Thanks for having us here tonight. I'm a resident of Montpelier and I just wanted to express my hope that the board will encourage the governor to use the the those surplus education funds for education as opposed to a rebate for homeowners. I mean, I, I feel that pitting homeowners against schoolchildren was probably not the best thing to do. And I think if anyone deserves a rebate in this time, it's these kids who have really lost out in education. And it's a, it's a one time opportunity and I would hope that the school board would be the advocates for schoolchildren because they don't have a voice in our government right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Eva.
Eva, okay.
Hi, thanks, everyone. My name is Eva Zerit, a public health specialist at Central Vermont Medical Center. And I'm here tonight with Dr. Mark Detman. I'll let him introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Mark Detman, ER doctor at CVMC. I've been there for almost 15 years now and I've got a particular focus on alcohol and drug dependence and the treatment of that. I'm part of the coalition that Eva is going to mention to you. And we offer 24/7 services to people looking for help with alcohol and dependence. But that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight because primary prevention is one of our prime motives and primary prevention starts in schools and homes. So let Eva take over.
Great, thanks, Mark. Let me lower my hand, distracting. So like Mark said, we both work for CVMC, but we're also here representing the Central Vermont Prevention Coalition or CDPC, which is an interdisciplinary collaboration of professional organizations and agencies working in the fields of drug and alcohol prevention, harm reduction, treatment, recovery. We also have representation from restorative justice and law enforcement and housing and youth services. So a wide range of folks are at the table. And the hospital serves as the backbone member of the coalition. The coalition's mission over the past seven years is to create a harmonized and stigma free system of care in Central Vermont where there's no wrong door, wrong time to get help for substance use disorders or addictions to drug and alcohol and to prevent the initiation of substance use, like Mark said. The reason that we're here tonight is to let you know about a series of virtual community forums that we're doing across Central Vermont. They're organized by supervisory union. So we held our first one last month for Central Vermont Supervisory Union, which is sort of the Northfield Orange area. And it was a real success. And our next one is slated for the Montpelier Roxbury School District on March 8th at 6:00 PM. It was previously in February, right in the middle of February break. So we decided to move it to March. And we're here asking for your help in promoting the event to your school communities, including parents, staff, teachers, administrators and students. Because a lot of what we'll be talking about that night focuses on primary prevention in youth. I just want to take a minute to tell you a little bit about the forums and then answer any questions you have. So at the forum, we bring a panel of experts from some of our partner organizations to let people know about resources that are available in Central Vermont for drug and alcohol related issues. And they're also available for Q and A. Then we center the conversation around primary prevention in youth and young adults. And we shared data that's specific to your region because even though Vermont is a small state and even though Central Vermont's a relatively small region, students really differ from school district to school district or supervisory union to supervisory union. So for example, in one school district, we might be concerned that students have low rates of thinking that vaping is harmful or that their parents think it's bad. While in Montpelier, that's not really what we're concerned about. Here, we're more concerned about some things like higher use rates when compared to the state average for drinking alcohol, attending school under the influence, being sold illegal drugs on campus, even some cocaine use, among other things. So once we sort of set the stage and really focused it in this hyper regional way, we move into the open forum for community members where we as professionals learn about what they see as issues, strengths, opportunities and primary prevention. And we move into actions that we think that the community could take based on our analysis of the data, like I mentioned before. So they're really specific to Montpelier. And we also elicit ideas from the community so that these ideas are community born and community driven. And at the end of the night, we make sure that folks are connected so they know how to take action when the forum is over. So that's a look at what we're planning on doing. It is going to be virtual. Again, we'd appreciate any support that you can give us in promoting an event like this. It's really important. Students and people around Vermont are really struggling with substance use during the pandemic, including a lot of co-occurring mental health and substance use issues. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you all might have or give you a little more info if you, if you need it. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other public comment? I don't see any hands.
Can I just add Eva, do you have a wish list? Do you have a wish list for this group as to what they might be able to do to help us broadcast this a bit?
Other supervisory unions have been able to do things like put an announcement in a school newsletter or put something on a website. These are things that would be really helpful for us, helping us share the event. We have a Facebook event, helping share that on social media can be helpful. And any other avenues that you have for getting information out to parents, staff and students.
So if you have a person that we could reach out to with that information, that would be fantastic.
Yep, Eva, Eva and sorry, Dr. Detman. On this call is Anna Hipko, who's my executive assistant. She deals with all of our communications. She's also our communications director. So Anna is the best person to reach out to with those kind of things.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Can I just add that it would be great if you could email, I mean, my email address is on the website, Emma Bay Hanson. But we have access to some Facebook groups and stuff that Anna doesn't. Anna does a great job with promoting events. We can share what Anna shares, but it might be nice to share a direct link to the event. If you could, if you could include that on that, that would be great.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, again, if you go to the, if you go to the MRPS website, there's a section for the board that has everybody's email on the board. Amanda?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for your work and thank you for coming here to bring this information. And we will make sure to share it also with the parents groups who are also disseminated with information. But on the MRPS website, there's the MRP, well, Anna will send you. Thank you for coming.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, folks.
No, thank you. Very informative. Consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I need to approve the content agenda, which includes minutes of policy committee meetings, superintendent evaluation committee meeting, the curriculum, the school board meetings and warrants and cons table acknowledging the receipt of the 21 audit. Superintendent's report draft agenda for February 16th approving policy D7 special ed co-curricular contract.
I have a question about an item on there. So I'm not sure if that's to make a motion with one item pulled. It's a really quick question.
Yeah.
On the co-curricular contract, it looked like something that we'd already created a position for. I just wondered why that was separate from the either and.
Was, it's, it's, sorry, it's for a Choreography.
Choreography.
That was not part of the position
Okay.
that we created for.
And I still, I still need a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion in addition to Jill's question? Great. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. So as I said earlier, we're adding, hi Kristin, how are you?
Hey, everybody.
We are going to add appointments to the visioning committee to the list. We got several great candidates, both from the community and from students, who are also part of the community, but adult community members and student community members. We have I think more applicants and there are positions for both. My thought after talking to Nathan is that we we choose the number that we slotted for adults and give those who we don't choose the option of being an alternate, but they don't get a stipend. I would like to include all the students as possible and just make them all alternates. And also we have to kind of deal with the stipend. I think we only have stipend for people on the committee, but my class is to, you know, try to give all the students some opportunity to be involved. We got, you know, a great slate. And we can expand the number as well. But we can also, we can and I think should go into executive session to make those choices, just so we can have discussion off camera. But let's open the board discussion with that item and with the opportunity for anyone who submitted a letter of interest, who also might want to say some words to, this is your opportunity to speak if you want to. Again, we did not require it and and then there's no, no need to, and we will, you know, consider your, your application without any prejudice if you do not. Yeah, so please either, please use the raise hand function. And if you can't use the raise hand function, turn your camera on and physically raise your hand. Excellent. I don't see any either. Just question for the board in terms of, do we want to do this selection now and then come back to the discussion about our meeting with legislators and some follow up there? Or do you want to wait a little later for executive session? I think in this room, we could probably turn the camera off, get enough people to leave and turn it to the executive session room.
It seems like we have a couple of people who are listening on for that legislative piece.
Okay.
I don't, I can't tell who's in attendance. And we can only see a list of four people in our view. So if there's a bunch of candidates who are also on, then I'm not sure if they're
I don't know if there are. Okay, let's have our board discussion and then go into executive session. Just so people who are interested can, can hear. Yeah, so at our last board meeting, we met with legislators. They brought up, I think, some great issues. I know there was a expressed desire to continue the discussion around the Ed fund surplus. There are also some desire to have further discussion around equity. I know that was not mentioned on the agenda. I've communicated with both Amanda, Emma, and I think Emma, you're going to reach out to
It's
Equity Policy Committee?
The Coalition for Vermont Student Equity.
Okay.
They have somebody lined up to come speak at our meeting on the 16th.
Okay, so we'll be hearing more about that 16th. Also, as you noted, there are several boards that have supported, I think.
Yeah, there's, there's about 25 school districts. And so this is about the people waiting, the the waiting proposals that are in the legislature right now under consideration. And so after the legislators presented to us at the last meeting, I felt like I was not understanding all of the options that were, had been presented and that were going to be up for a vote. So I wanted to understand those options a little bit better. And once I did my research, I sort of realized, I think there's an opportunity for us as a school district to be timely in our support of one of those proposals. And it does seem like there, you know, the Coalition for Vermont Student Equity has done a lot of work. They've been doing it for years, advocating for what will be the most equitable for the most students in the state of Vermont. And, you know, we heard, we heard the reference to winners and losers during our legislative presentation. And Amanda brought up that maybe that's not the best way to look at it. And I feel like a district like Montpelier is in a particularly well poised spot to sort of make a statement because a lot of people rightly or wrongly would perceive us as losers in some of these scenarios that are being presented. And I don't see it that way personally. And I think that as a district, it would be powerful, as a school board, it would be powerful for us to sort of stand up for what's the most equitable for the most kids in Vermont versus what's going to be best for our taxpayers, you know, in Montpelier. So I see it as an opportunity to sort of stand with doing what's right for the most people in Vermont versus doing, you know, seeing it as a sort of winner and loser situation. So I'd like us all to sort of delve into the materials a little bit more and understand the options that are on the table. And then if we see it as being, you know, something that we all can agree to, I think it would be great for us to join the coalition as a school board. There's, there's 25 school districts, school boards that are, or school districts that are signed on. And so we could join that group of people, of folks.
Okay.
The board should also, I was asked to testify on this on Friday. So I will be testifying to the legislature on Friday. They're interested in us because of our not small, but not large EL population.
Right.
And the influence and just started, I didn't know, so Grant and I have been working on that testimony.
May I ask what your position is?
My position is they're gonna, they're gonna change the way equalized people is handled. So it's not, to me, it's not a winner or loser. It's just how, how it happens. Either of the suggestions are a significant tax increase on our, on our citizens. And so I think what Grant and I came down, and I don't want to speak for Grant, but is we hope that they do a transition period, obviously, so we can, you know, do this in a gradual way and don't get hit by a, I think I saw it was like $3 million additional tax burden with either model. It's a 3 million plus. So it's significant. So they could do that over time. I personally, and Grant, I think would agree with me, the grant model, in all honesty, the agency of education does a really good job of making those incredibly burdensome for schools. And it could very well create a siloed system, much like special education has in the past. So I am not a huge fan of adding any more
Grants.
grants that the AOE runs. Because honestly too, it's an additional burden, more so than it already is. I don't think the taxpayers will, like us wanting to add grant managers onto our, onto the tax burden as well. So I'm not necessarily, I'm not a fan of the grant idea. As Grant said, the equalized people piece is very complex, but it's what we do now to make budgets. So it's a known entity. So let's make, let's get that right, would be my opinion on it. And, and the legislator needs to know that, you know, because of Montpelier's beautiful welcoming of Afghan refugee families, we have 12 new English learners coming into our, who are in our schools. And they weren't here on October 1st for that count. And so and that's a significant impact on our, on our system. So, you know, I'm, I want to give them the realities of what we have. In addition to that, and then I'll stop. This school in particular is influenced by this conversation because it's a school below 40 peoples. And that had some impact on us and our budgeting and how we think about our budgeting and whether we can sustain a small school like this. So, you know, there's some suggestions in some of these conversations to almost incentivize schools to continue in this way, but stopping for a school like this is incredibly hard. So it's, there, there are some realities that I think need to be put on the table in front of the legislators. Grant, did I capture everything that we were talking about?
Yeah, I think so. I was confused by it because I saw this education fund surplus and it's
Yeah, that's
Yeah, so what we're talking about is equalized pupil calculations, which will change
The weighting setting.
Funding formula, which is a different thing. I thought we were talking about like that magical $90 million and how we're getting
I thought that next, but the equalized people came up and, you know.
So, yeah, I think it's unfortunate that they use the term winners and losers. What it really made, what they really should be saying is there are districts that are going to gain pupils and those that are going to lose pupils based on a calculation. It's winners and losers is a horrible term to use because it's, it's just connotes so many other things. But, but yeah, I think the free and reduced calculation is going to be probably even a bigger thing for us than ELL. It'll be because like right now, I think the, the weighting factor is like a point two five. And if they do this, it will be more like 2.5, which is a huge adjustment in our free and reduced population percentage.
Yeah, we're about 23% across the districts.
Yeah, so in, in, instead of just multiplying by point two five, it's going to be multiplying by 2.5, which for, for districts with a high FRO percentage, they're going to see a huge increase in their equalized pupil count. And we would not see that kind of
And all of these things are connected because our free and reduced lunch rate is based on families filling out complicated paperwork, which some do and some don't. But when you don't, when you don't charge for free and reduce, or when you don't charge for lunch, why would they fill out the paperwork? You know, like there's things that are connected here. And so if less people fill out the paperwork for lunch, then that number goes down even more. So it, that number is not necessarily a real number of our community.
And the, the piece you were talking about with small schools, it's not only, there's like two adjustments that are being projected or, or considered. One is based on the number of kids in a school and the other is based on the population of the town. So whether they're going to do one of those or both of those, I don't know, but it's, that's, it's a hard thing to think about because in some ways, like Act 46 was trying to consolidate. Now this is kind of going the opposite direction of almost incentivizing separation. So it's a theoretical challenge to wrap your head around. And the only other thing I would say is, what else was in there?
We're sorry, they're, they're asking about the thresholds.
Access spending threshold.
Yeah.
Right.
They asked for comment on that, which was just like define them better and get rid of the excess spending, deal with it in weights. And then the, what was the other one that they're talking about that they haven't defined yet? So the floor.
Well, I think what they were debating is whether they should legislate a, a floor for education spending per pupil. Like a district can't come in at less than 12,000
Is that a problem right now? Yes, yes. In Franklin County, it is. Yes.
So I don't, I don't know that, that I think that's a kind of a dangerous road to go down to dictate a minimal amount because for, for example, some districts don't have the ability to carry over surpluses. So if they have a big surplus one year, they have to budget that as a revenue in the following year. And if they do that, all of a sudden their spending per pupil could be really low. But if there's a legislative limit, then they would have to artificially increase. You know, it, it, it's a little scary because of some of the scenarios that you can see.
And, and is, is the thinking behind that to make sure that if there's a redistribution that's bad rather than a district coming and saying, okay, we'll just spend the same as we spent last year, but, you know, reduce our backface.
Yeah. There are several superintendents who are very concerned about that.
Amanda, did you have your head up earlier?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this is, I always think that it seems hard now, but like this is the long term plan for students in Vermont, right? And, and I think if we are serious about, you know, having an equity policy that we are caring about the student, that that is what drives like the volume. And I think the EL, you know, talking about the EL participation, for example, and I increase, these are things that, you know, we can plan also like, these are things that I've been pushing for, like more translation, more EL, you know, that, that are just in line with goals of districts that care about these populations. And I think that the, the hybrid model that the COLD study is proposing, which, you know, will allow for some, some districts to say, well, you know, I prefer a grant down this hybrid model right now. I think that will give that flexibility. And I think with the surplus of money and all these conversations, this is the perfect time for Vermont to move towards an equity platform. So I would like to see it like, I've been, I would like to have this conversation more in depth because I think it is a value system that, you know, like we need to be able to say, as a school board, in that position. I think that's important.
I don't think I'll first.
I have a couple of quick questions and sorry, everybody, I was late. I missed the agenda. I didn't receive the Roxbury part. So this is, I, I have to admit, in the past year, roughly a year, I haven't followed this as closely. I followed it really closely when it was first coming out and read the waiting study. And I thought that was great work and finds a lot of really important issues with inequities and how we fund schools in Vermont, like the devil's in the details. I, I feel like it spotlighted where that devil was, if you will. I was surprised because I, I went after last week somewhere to Emma. I, I took some time and looked at the task force report and I didn't, I didn't take a ton of time. I just looked at like the highlights, the recommendations, things like that. You might have talked about this, so I apologize, but I noticed that ELL, it looks like they're not planning to add an extra weight or any extra money for ELL. Is that accurate?
That's the first proposal that's on the table.
They're still discussing it, my understanding. They're trying to figure out what to do.
Okay, because that was going to be my, that was, that was like
That decision is not made yet.
Okay, because it, it, I was really surprised to see that. And I found that to be very concerning just at a statewide level that it didn't appear that from, from my quick review of this, that there was an added value for those, those students where there's clearly additional need and additional resources. So that was a concern I had with what I saw from this task force proposal. And then my second question is, I, I don't know if you have any insight into this, Libby. I've asked about this a little bit. I have not, again, I haven't been paying close attention to this. But it is, it's, it's incentive finance right now. And something that Senator Cummings repeatedly said is, we're just learning about this. I think she said we're like in kindergarten on this stuff. I realize that's an analogy. But do we think that this is actually going to pass this year?
Yeah.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm wondering.
I would be surprised if it didn't.
Um, so I mean, I, I don't feel like I'm an authority enough to, to speak on it. And that's why I'm really glad that somebody is going to be coming to speak at our next meeting. But just when I, when I read through the materials and when I had a conversation with a friend of mine who is close to the issue, the hybrid model that the coalition is proposing sort of is the best of both worlds in a way where they do equalize. They do change the weighting across the board and include ELL. But then there's this special category of, I think they are referred to as low incidence schools. Is that right? There's okay, so there's, and that would, and I think Montpelier falls into that category, or there's a good chance that Montpelier would fall into that category. And then the grants would come into play. So, and it's, you know, it all makes my head spin a little bit. But I'm glad we're going to be able to talk about it more. When I, when I hear the conversation in, in, from Grant's brain, it's very heady and all about like budget and math. And I do want to sort of like steer the conversation And I do want to sort of like steer the conversation um, towards our diversity, equity and inclusion policy. And really ask ourselves as a board and as a district, you know, if these are our values as a community. To stand up for what's equitable for the most people and not just what's the best for our individual school district. And and who knows, maybe it will be the best for our individual school district. But sometimes what's best for Montpelier School District isn't best for Winuski, you know, and this type of legislation is. Is not looking at individual school districts, it's looking at the whole state and sort of what's best for the most kids. And so that's where I would like to sort of steer the conversation more towards. Um, what our values are as a community and sort of which one of these proposals is best in line with with our values. We can continue that conversation next week or two weeks from now.
Would it make sense to invite Senate Senator Perchlik back for for that meeting to ask him? Questions related to this. He is the senator and he did serve on this task force and he is on the, I'm just wondering.
I I don't, or in my opinion, I don't think so. I think that coalition is very separate conversation of the passport itself. And there are, there are some difference. The passport was not. Some of those models didn't, was not part of the recommendations of the passport. They happened after they had already recommended. Even though there was a lot of faculty change, some of them, talking about that E L. Category station, that that piece of the pupil. Uh, waiting, so that that was not the recommendation of the task force. And then the legislators asked. Kobe to weigh in and that was like the follow-up report and that's the conversation that happened with all this proposal. So. I mean, the task for report. So I'm just saying that I think one step at a time here for the coalition is doing the work. Who represents some of these, the school boards, the school, the school districts that have a high L P L population. Um, and some of them are, of those districts that voted on are. Um, well, they do, it's not like all of them are. And I, so I haven't been part of this coalition, just to be transparent. Um, because I didn't have time to put in my brain. I was like, I cannot dedicate some time into that. I've been getting the emails, but I just like, that's why I kept asking somebody from this district to be. To receive, like to to look in this, like really couldn't. Figure it out in my brain and then so it was, I think the Kobe report was very. Transparent and clear from after the task report. And so I have been using a lot of the. Uh, public comments from Senator Uli Hardy. Of all the reports that they have given and keep off of it. So a lot of good questions.
What's the timeline of the whole thing?
I don't know. I know they're meeting on it regularly. They tried to have. They asked very specific superintendents to come today, actually to testify and like, none of us could. And then they moved it to Friday. So we, I mean, there, it it seems like they're moving.
Yeah, it sounds to me also like it's moving pretty quickly and that. You know, if we as a board want to be vocal to influence anything, but the time is sort of better happen quickly.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're looking at the two weeks from now to get the coalition people to come in, but at the same time, they're. Moving ahead. I I was trying to get gauge.
Yeah, and the lawmakers typically, their their sort of calendar, their mental calendar is they have a thing called crossover. I think this week it's. Probably the week before town meeting because they're actually off that whole week. So they, I think they typically try to sort of get things from one side of the body to the other, or at least get it like solidified. So this doesn't have a bill number yet. I think we figured out today, but that doesn't mean anything because clearly there's like this momentum happening. That like in the next couple of weeks, it's going to gel around.
There's probably going to be a committee bill, I have a feeling.
And then it will have to go to.
The House.
The House and then they'll probably.
And it seemed like from what our legislators were saying last week is the reason why it's in the Senate is because there are. That there are, it it impacts different uh, districts differently within each senator's district. Whereas for the house members, they may end up advocating for one versus another. So what I, what I gathered from what they were saying last week. And this is just what that, what I interpreted from what they said, is it seems like they're taking that strategy because the senators sit at a higher level and geographic. They cover a larger geographic area so to try and avoid some of the like. Jockeying that might occur.
District level.
Yeah, thinking about it a little more broadly. But I'm very interested to see what happens with this.
How is, how is enrollment snap currently determined? Is it also percentage of federal poverty level, I'm pretty certain? But is it something that that a family had to apply for or?
Unless, what's the um. The direct certifications, if 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 a family applies through some direct certification, we can accept that.
Yeah, it's if your gross household income is equal to or less than a hundred eighty-five percent of the federal poverty level. Um, or you have children and get the um Vermont, Vermont C I T C or income tax credit.
Are there members of this board that or Libby that have objections to the approach of the. Coalition's recommendation?
I don't feel that I can make it.
Yeah, I don't feel I fully understand it either. I mean, I'm definitely supportive of the contact, concept. I mean, I do, I do have a little bit of a fear that if we make our community more expensive, we're going to make it more elite. And you know, are there proposals to deal with that? So you know, Montpelier is already expensive already and it's one of the reasons that. You know, we have a population that's relatively privileged. If we become a more expensive community to live in, we have higher tax rates, that I think has probably the. Effect of making our community even more exclusive. So I I would like to see, you know, how that's done.
One of that question is like. How does uh, again, system values, right? They are the, we invest, let's say, I'm just, you invest in this and then we look at other things that need to be cut. To lower that rate, right? Like it's not like, this is the only thing that's going to increase our tax rate. This is why budget says and this is why. You look at your whole picture, like again, this is the value of the student and like how we uphold that conversation.
I think I may just add on, I appreciate the question because yeah, I'm feeling like we feel like we need to have some thoughts about the. Five different versions of this that are being discussed in the committees each day, but. I I do want to make sure that whatever the weights are based on are are objective and not subjective. So I do get worried if they're based on things that we can't quantify. You know, i- if if we can't actually capture the actual need of our community in a number that translates to a weight. That's, that's challenging. It'd be, you know, we we need to be able to demonstrate a real need and not have it based on something that. Isn't necessarily reflective of the needs of our communities. So. If we can't, if we, if we're depending, I'm one of those parents, I get that form and I'm like, I'm saying, God, I'm not filling this out. That if that's what, that if those are the sort of things that our weight would be based on, that requires work or grant applications or that kind of stuff, then the less. Truly fair it is for the students. It needs to be based on actual information, actual need.
And that's a little bit of privilege, right? Being able to say.
Exactly, exactly.
But my concern is not those that don't. Need to, but those who can't. They benefit from.
Yeah, I want to be clear. My point was that. That if we're depending on people having to take an action. That they may not know about or may not be able to take, and those are the numbers that are. Weights are based on, that's not really reflective of what the kids need, is all I'm saying. Any of those barriers to that access that are thrown in the way. Makes it harder to actually. If it's a grant application and a a particular district doesn't have someone who's capable. You know, jumping through the hoops of a grant application and that leads to the district not getting what they need, that's not. That's not fair. That's all. I want to be really clear. It wasn't about. Just forms, but any, any roadblock that can be put in place of. Showing the need is not really true access.
Are there, if I may ask one more question, may there, might there be ways for some of these? For the board to come up with policies that allow us to. Assist in families and their need or is that a possibility or is everything mandated? Across the state equally.
I think we have to find out what the, what the law is going to be first and then figure out processes. Those are, those would be more procedures than policies. That would be my, my take.
Yeah, many of the systems are created to stigmatize poverty. And that is what the whole process is to apply for the entities launch to apply for this service or this service. If they, they, what, whether or not you have the need, so like, it's thinking about. Those barriers more, more to support those families and change that conversation around the statement station that it's a. In a very small level, uh, the work of the parents groups and the tax lawyer of changing them out. That conversation around like, we have, you know, just invitation to things that should be free for people to come in. Versus like pay five bucks to fund ways, which limits some, it, just little things that make. They're shifting that stigma around already access to.
Well, I look forward to the, to their presentation and next week, and I think if there's anybody else that we could invite, if people feel that it's. Somehow biased or or, you know, weighted in one direction or the other. If there was somebody else that we wanted to invite to sort of present multiple perspectives, I'm totally open to that.
I was, I asked last week about. And it, I I know that the the legislature's joint fiscal office is stretched thin, so I I don't. Based on their response and based on the people I know who work there, I don't think we're gonna get anybody from there, but it would be great. And Brad James is probably stretched super thin. He's like, he's probably thinking, I'm not, there's no way he's, he's thinking. He's gonna, he's gonna present on this just for our school board. It would be like, then do it for, make it available. It would be one presentation available to like every school board kind of thing, but I do think it would be helpful. I I want to hear from this coalition. I appreciate what this coalition is trying to accomplish. My general thought is it would be helpful for us to have some additional information that's not from a five oh one C four organization. Um, e- even though, you know, I support many five oh one C four organizations, um. That's kind of irrelevant. A five oh one C four organization is advocating for something and it would be great if we could get kind of a balanced. Overview of the situation, just like something that's like, here are the options on the table. Here's what the legislature is thinking. Here's what was proposed in this study. Here's, here, here are the main options that are on the table and here's how they compare with each other and here's how they impact these different. Populations. We've had that in the past. I, in an ideal world, that's how democracy would function, would have that information and would make a decision based on that information. Unfortunately, I'm not certain that that information is out there right now. You know, with the Superintendent's Association, the S B A, I haven't seen them put anything together on this.
Uh, no, the Superintendent's Association is just responding to requests to testify and it is based on money. One more testifying. You know, it's based on finance, how things influence you financially. That's what they're asking us to testify on. They were very specific. And the reason why they're asking me to testify versus. U thirty-two superintendent, because of our specific numbers and our specific budgetary needs.
Yeah, so if you come up with anyone, I would say invite them to the meeting.
I, I don't know, I, Andrew Stein will come up with anyone, but if anybody else here does, I'm not really. Yeah.
I think it's important for the board to be clear about what your outcome is as well because the, what, this is the legislature's job to. To decide on what's going to happen. Um, and this board may be able to advocate for a position. Um, but that's, that would be what the board is doing, right? Is is not simple advocacy, but that's, that's what it is. They're not. There is no vote to be had with the board, other than do we advocate for a certain position or not?
Well, I think the request though is that, my understanding though, I'm out, what you're asking for and Amanda, what you're asking for, correct? Is that we join this organization, correct?
That we join, that we put our support behind their recommendation, yeah. And um, and I, from what I've heard, there's a possibility of one or two senators in our county being um. You know, deciding votes. So I think it would be.
Two of them are very, very critical.
So I think we are in a unique position as a school district that is seen as privileged. As a school district who's seen as a potential loser and a, and a district that's in. In, you know, in the constituency of a couple of very prominent senators on this issue. So I think we're in a unique position to potentially. Make our voice heard. If you look at the list of school districts, I think it's very telling. The school districts that have already signed on to support this proposal, they tend to be more. Rural, lower income, more um, diversity districts and so. Um, you know, just my gut feeling is like this could be an opportunity for us to stand in support. Of those other school districts who are really struggling. So I see it as an opportunity um, for us to stand firm in our values around equity. And um, you know, if I I'm totally open to being like educated, I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on the issue. I would love for more people to come and talk to me. I'm only, I'm only basing it on the research that I've done so far. And and I felt pretty strongly based on the research I did and who I was speaking to, but um. But if there's more input, I would love to hear it, you know?
Yeah, I'd just like an overview for the board. That's where I, I, that's what I was asking legislators last week, is if there was somebody who could.
And you too, this, this couple likes, she was testifying every committee in the past month. About the the task force. I would just say that in line with Emma's idea, like we need to be informed that. For me, that the conversation is not just about like here equity, but like how how should a customer, you know, like. Okay, wha- what is it mean? And then you can make, you can make a decision. Um, because I think it's important. I think that's what I kept asking is like, I don't really understand how the pupil waiting will. Impact that, I still don't know that. I still don't have those senses of fi- financials of. I could, I I want to be informed about that, like that please, like what does it mean? Like what does it actually mean on the ground for some? Someone that doesn't have the financial background to understand what the impact is, like what does it look like? What are those scenarios? And so I think that's how we can get there, right? Like being able to actually know how.
I want to be mindful of agenda and I feel like we have this on the agenda at our next meeting.
No, absolutely. Let's, no, I was just gonna, I just wanna. That was a good conversation, I think it was a good conversation. Um, so let's talk about the education fund surplus. I think this might be an easier conversation. I'm certainly in support of reinvesting that in our schools. Um, I would, but I'll open it up to the the floor, I think, you know, given that, you know, Burlington is in filings and. We've, we've got a, you know, hundred-year-old uh, middle school that certainly could use a little TLC and.
The PCB law.
The PCB law, we have, you know, we've certainly heard a lot about lead throughout, you know, Vermont. It seems like there's a lot. Of good we could do to um, invest in our kids and invest in our infrastructure with ninety million dollars other than. Have a gimmick of Phil Scott.
I have a question on that. Um, when we talk about reinvestment and maybe this is too early, but. Are there going to be any restrictions? Are there going to be any guidance around what we could do with it, what we can't do with it? Or are you deciding who's?
We're not deciding.
Yeah, so.
The governor and the legislature will be deciding it.
I- in terms of if it, if it's decided that, if it was decided that it's going to be reinvestment, would the governor be kind of. Reinvesting in schools across the lawn or in? Would the governor be kind of reinvesting in schools across the lawn or in kids?
In his budget address was to.
To, to give it back, but I, I, yeah, I'm kind of flipping that. If it. Was decided that it's gonna be reinvesting, uh, or reinvestment of funds, how would that? Do we have any idea how that would work on that money to come?
The legislature would decide, I believe, they have the budgetary power.
Theoretically, it would lead to the following year, some kind of adjustment to, so that spending could be a certain way, but the tax rates wouldn't change. I don't think that's really what's gonna.
I don't think that's how they, how they would plan it. I mean, if I, when I look at my crystal ball, that be, that PCB. Law is significant and will have direct, will have way more people in Macy's. You know, as a result of Burlington, if any indicator of that.
Could you give us like a Twitter version of what the PCB lies? It's, it's the polyfluor- whatever contamination in school buildings?
Sure, yeah, probably whatever. Yeah, we got our environmental lawyer.
Requirement for testing and then theoretically, if the testing comes a certain way, there's.
There's a requirement for testing, but there is no end for remediation, but there's no budget to remediate.
Be extremely.
As we've learned from the Burlington example, it, it could potentially mean new schools across Vermont. Which are, let's face it, expensive, right? So that is significant. Um, I've talked to the board on numerous occasions about the need to increase capacity across the state. Particularly in central Vermont for mental health support to schools. We cannot solve the mental health crisis that we see right now. Schools cannot do it without, without outside agencies. And so if you're gonna, you're gonna put it anywhere, put it in community mental health organizations to increase the capacity there. Uh, other things I think about is that we will have a significant teacher shortage and administrator shortage coming up very quickly. And so how do we invest in teachers to get them to come to the scene and wanna be a teacher? Cutting pensions is not a good option for that. So that's another piece of it. Moving back to the equity conversation, how do we invest in Vermont so that we diversify our communities more? Cause schools can't solve that either by ourselves. So how do we, how do we think about that? Because that's what's good for kids. So there's some things I'm thinking about with. With an ad surplus fund, um, that doesn't have to do with myself and the taxpayer getting a two hundred fifty dollar check in the.
And those are all well over ninety million bucks.
So how do you?
Yeah, but what you, I, yeah.
Yeah, I mean. Revenue PCB alone, if it's. Yeah, if, if it's a, you know, pervasive problem.
If it was important enough to pass a law, then you need to pass something for.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, this idea, I don't actually know the, the proposal that's on the table. It's, it's to give individual families sort of a, a rebate. A gift.
That's fine with them, yeah.
Okay, and. So something that Governor Scott said many months ago, when we were sort of in the depths of the pandemic, the early stages. Early stages and depths, if that's a possible thing, definitely. Um, he said something to the effect of, you know, they were about to get a whole bunch of federal money. And he said something like, you know, I wanna be able to look back on the way that we spent this money. And feel like we made a lasting impact and remember what we spent the money on. And look back and be able to say, you know, wasn't that a great use of money? Look at what it did for us. And I don't think individual family rebates, you know, at the amount of money that we're talking, though I'm sure it would. You know, make an impact on a lot of individual families. I would much rather see the money be spent on something that makes like a broader impact for more people. And is more lasting in the memory of Vermonters. So I will echo the sentiments of, um, the person who spoke at public comment. And definitely in, in, in support of us advocating publicly. For, um, for us to reinvest that money rather than give individuals.
Just one other thought is that there is a certain amount of surplus. That is expected to be in the budget because of the fact that. The edge fund health could be really bad and if something could turn sideways on you. And if you don't have that surplus to tap into, then like this year, we had that big increase in the dollar. You, you could see a big drop in the dollar. You know, the tax rates could go through the roof. But having some surplus there, so the tax commissioner could recommend using some of that to help control tax rates. Is good. So I don't think it's a, I don't think it's an all or nothing. I think the advocate, the advocate, um, position might be. Just don't give it all back. And either reinvest, which might take some time to think about how. And also to leave some of it in there just as a control.
I mean, coming from the guy who has led this board and the district to have a very healthy capital. Plan and fund balance, right? It's like we've, we've steered the ship to a place where, yes, we are saving money and we're. We're having surplus, but we're saving that surplus and then we're reinvesting it. And I think that's been a very great strategy that has helped. Um, the condition of our schools and helped us through the pandemic and in a lot of ways. So. I, I think we should stick with that, um, philosophy. With Grant's philosophy.
To, to be clear, the, the, uh, general amount of fund balance that we had to help with that is pretty much the statutory. Amount that's required in the ad fund. That's a reserve fund for the exact type of crisis that we found ourselves in. And we actually. Drew all of that down plus some as, and, and as a state. During like, what, it was like, it was mid twenty twenty. That was crazy. Um, but then because of all the federal, federal money, what that did was huge for, on so many levels. It kept people spending money, which cut sales and use tax up, which was huge for the ad fund. Like sales and use tax revenue, all of it goes to the ad fund. And that was really, really big, but also all of the federal dollars that this district and many other districts got.
Yeah, I think the difference being of what Emma was saying though, is that before we knew the federal money was coming. There was not a moment where I, as a superintendent, needed to worry that we couldn't do something for our community that was needed. You know, and even now, we need K, K ninety five math debt goal, you know, like it's not a question. For us because of our healthy fund balance, which is due to Grant's. Beautiful financial work, but, um, that, that's not the same in every district.
No.
You know, across the state.
I'm wondering, I'm thinking about the staffing questions and I'm thinking about the lack of people that are able to. To serve in our community mental health agencies. And I'm wondering about. Scholarships and educational programs, whether they be at the college level or even at a tech center level that will prepare people to assist. I don't know exactly what that looks like, but forty five million dollars to help. Boost programs in the tech center that can get kids as individual assistants into schools, starting their careers and. Pro, you know, whether it's maybe it's a two-year associate program that gets somebody. Uh, into a situation where they can go work and at our community mental health agencies, that agencies pay really poorly to. No retain, no ability to retain. The need is, is just ballooning and it's, and even for substance use. Problems that's ballooning during this, this pandemic situation, then, you know. So that's, I'm, I'm curious of, of what, what are the sort of minimal. Educational achievements that need, that people need to get so that they can. Support the schools, not necessarily as a full teacher, but quicker, you know. And, uh, potentially have a job with a community mental health agency that allows them to get into schools and be a partnership. Um, one of the problems is DCF is over here, corrections is over here. Education, the Department of Education is over here. Uh, economic services is, is different group and they're all attempting to play a role in. Supporting people that are, have great needs. They have different buckets that their money is coming from. They can't coordinate, they can't work together. If they can work together and it costs us forty five million dollars, that could potentially have a lasting benefit for the state. Just to coordinate agencies and their ability to respond to some of these problems. Some thoughts that I've had about how to reinvest that money to support the.
All right, um, in terms of.
Well, you know, I, I think there's a conversation around what are the themes that are across districts, right? I, which, you know, I, I can make lists of the things that impact us, that impact other districts as well, those like. Bull and hazen harassment, mental health systems that are flow, restorative justice system that are flow. That leads to corrections and leads to policing. Um, the lack of summer camps that supports students who are behind. Literacy issues around testing and all of that. Curriculum development, retention of biopop teachers, because I think that a lot of. The conversations around, that's diverse, but we're losing my confidence because of the culture in the district right now. Three biopop teachers quit in the last, because the culture is so events for them. So I think not in the district, but.
To be clear.
But, um. So I think that like the, this, this, there's a system shift that needs to happen. Around like the piecemeal approaches to the change that we need to make. You're ninety five million dollars in one of the. Affinity spaces, somebody had a great idea hiring for the district, two people. That can evaluate the mental health system of our community, like who's there? How do we? Join the system together? How do we support the school as a community driven thing? You hire someone to do the systems thinking, collaborate with all the groups that are in existence. A model like that, that can like be replicated in all the other districts where there is a lack of worship mental health, like. All of the systems, uh, we have really brilliant people in many, many parts of the state that are working along. So how do we? I think part like, our systems are flawed because they're not connected, because they are disjointed and. We can buy a lot of infrastructure, but to for lots of our students are not insane. The work that we need right now is, I think it's like a system shift that we need to do. Like, how do we think about? How to think about schools, not as such as schools, but as a community place where all these connections happen. And that the job is not just for the school, the job is for all of these communities to come to, to make up. So I see money here. Restores systems. There's great people doing great work, but not everybody has the privilege to know them.
I'm surprised I don't see a coalition with that similar. Kind of coalescing for this topic. It's almost like this is like a really immediate need where there needs to be some sort of an entity. And perhaps the school boards association or the principals or superintendents that has the sort of. We can give you those things that, that the education fund desperately should be paying for. I haven't seen that. The way that I've seen a coalition with actual concrete agreements from the waiting and. I do worry just based on what I'm seeing in my limited oversight. I'm not seeing the specificity of that and therefore in, in lieu of that, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. I'm worried about where this is gonna go. Very unhelpful comment.
And, and to be clear, this night, just so everyone is aware, the head fund, there's five percent reserve in there and there's additional reserve. And then there's addition, this is this unreserved, unallocated ninety million dollars. So it really, and. There's a lot, I'm sure there are a lot of legislators that also have ideas for this. So I, I appreciate what Phil's saying because. The, our school board isn't gonna have much influence over this, but like the V S B A school board speaking as one saying. These are important issues that you could be using this money for. That's, that's how, you know, that'll ring. You know, that'll, that'll, that'll convey the message clear to legislators and. The governor and, and ministers will listen to it. All the schools are saying, hey. Maybe not. Better chance than if we're just speaking as one. Of like fifty some school districts or now it's less than that, isn't it?
But I think there is a chance to have our voice there, you know? To say, this is what we see and then maybe other people will echo. I, I'm in the bullying harassment and hazing council. Just submitted recommendations. To the secretary of French who asked like, what are we doing with this one? I was like, oh, here's the list of all the things we need to do. We need you to hire blah, 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 blah. So I think, you know, being able to have. Groups or school boards that say, here's some of these things and then you can, you know, we can ask a coalition. This coalition of other school boards to do the thing or to like join, right? If we wanted to advocate, I think there are ways to do it. The school board association has other interests as well, I think.
So I think we need kind of move the conversation along is, we obviously wanna do something. Or something that's doable that we do that'll have some sort of impact. Is it a letter just from the board to the governor? Is it, we judge the school board association? See if there's a coordinated effort we can join. Is it both?
I think it's both.
Who wants to take the lead on? Either one of those.
I nominate Jim Murphy.
Jim Murphy has very little time. Either way, I mean, I could reach out to the school boards if someone wants to put together some sort of letter. I am just reading Dr. Sue and see if there's a coordinated effort to get back. Okay.
Thanks, Amanda.
All right, um, any, any more of this or is that kind of a good, good next up?
We don't have to, we don't need to like pass a resolution or anything like that.
I don't think so. I mean, I, I think we'd wanna, you know. I think what they have a draft, we, we'd wanna review it and make sure we're comfortable with it.
And what's the timeline on, on that decision?
On what?
Oh, that's gonna be, that's, 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 doesn't have, that's probably gonna be in the big, that's May or June.
The perfect letter.
Yeah.
Well, we wanna start reading the narrative.
Might also. Yeah, I'm just thinking, might.
Better to the editor?
No. I think we start with this.
Uh, so next item is. Okay, on the community input for the board, I've reached on the, sir.
So should we move, should we do the executive session for the appointments to the vision committee?
You can do that now if you want to. I'm happy, I'm good at that. Yeah.
Okay.
Is that you, Amanda?
Yes, it was my, oh, on this question. So I, uh, I would say that we had three really successful, beautiful affinity spaces. With lots of great ideas, which I share with you. I hope that you read them. If you didn't, you should. Um, and then maybe share with our administrators and. Uh, Kristen, me and I met our equity committee with the idea that we still wanna do a little more. Uh, we, uh, we still wanna reach out to the. Families who are struggling financially, where you, to just hear their voice, what, you know, what ideas they have. And so Mia is going to, um, develop in a flyer where Mia can have. Uh, a session or two, uh, we wanted to offer it to you or if you want to have a lunch session. So I can put in a flyer with the zoom, just be like. Need with a school board and, and give just people more chances. I, uh, did develop some flat, some server. I did develop some flat, some surveys for each of the affinity spaces to. Kind of recent to families who didn't make it, say, hey, if you still have time to weigh in. Give your voice, hear the feedback because you're missing something. I mean, generally, I think the echo, many of the conversations are echoes of things we've heard here, especially, so we had. Special ed, literacy, BIPOC, LGBTQ, and neurodiverse, so we have five affinity spaces. I led the BIPOC, neurodiverse, LGBTQ, and then Mia, LGBTQ. And then Kristen did a Roxbury little session with LGBTQ also. So those are there and maybe we'll share that with you. And yeah, I mean. In summary, I, I think it's some of these topics, right? Around restorative justice, around curriculum development, like concerns. Around being able to be seen in terms of the BIPOC LGBTQ, mainly either the disability folks about. How we solve the stigma and all of that, well, access to interventions early before, you know, it triggers the law. You know, we can do in terms of. Anyways, you can read it and it's there. The question we had for Libby is if you want a more formal report, we, we could do. I did get from the A O E the dates of the S R three. And so just what we wanted to ask about that timeline.
The application's due in March.
May twenty seconds, what?
It's March, yeah. We just had a meeting about it this morning.
For the S R three. So what would, so the question to you is. What do you need from us and how, who would you like to incorporate those comments? And if we get more in a couple of weeks, or do you not want us to get it more?
We're at a stage where we need to start making some decisions. It has to go through a, a public. Comment period, you know, the plan has to go through a public comment period, so we need, and then, and we need time to actually write the grant. So we're pretty much, if you think about where we are in the school year with February break coming up very quickly. We're pretty much at the point where we need to, we need to put a plan together to present to the community, so. There isn't a whole lot of time left. When you think about all of those things, I'm curious how many people were at each.
Um, I can, I can share, so for the BIPOC, it was like six families. The, there is about eleven, not the, I don't, I don't know if there is, it was me I did that. The neurodiverse about the lesson, I have to like look at the numbers, so. It's a small number, but pretty representative of the same conversation that happened in this district, so I'm looking out so.
What I'll do is I'll put that Google back because anytime it's updated, I know Kristen had to put some things in from R V S. Anytime it's updated, I'll just put that link into the public plan document that's on the website. And so when anybody updates it, it will just automatically update for the.
That's great, that's great, yeah, yeah, so we, we will come here and try to do it, just a few more and then give that. Google forum to that people, I'm not sure if you had a chance to actually send that to. Like the flyer to the groups that you have. You said that you had some desserts.
But did you have Hannah to do it?
I, I am not sure if I actually did, if you wanted to, you know. Where it looks like this. So, so I do, she can send this to the server with it. I have, I have three Google forms, four Google forms set up with links to that specific. Affinity space so that people can read what was said and add more to, but not in that condenser. I will take that, so you could insert those three, is that appropriate by the number?
Thank you for giving that. Yeah, thank you.
Any questions for Amanda or question in the process? Yeah, no, thank you for doing that. With Amanda and I know me as not the earth as well.
Sorry, just asking, Kristen, if I made something, did I make something?
Sorry, I'm catching bits and pieces, I have an executive assistant in the room with me right now. So, um, yeah, I think I'm on the, so that there's just gonna be some outreach to. Families experiencing financial hardship, and I think what we talked at, at the meetings that if there was a way to send that opportunity out. Like Libby, if you had, I don't know if that kind of data gets collected and there's a way to kind of anonymously, anonymously send that out. Like if that was part of the outreach that you did over the summer. But that there was an interest to figure out if we could get that in front of folks that, you know, it would be relevant for. You had an avenue.
I did check with Anna to make, to see if she has a, I'm looking, she was having internet problems at home, so. She may or may not be on, but yeah, I have to check with Anna to see if she has a list for that particular group, I'm not sure if she did or not.
Okay.
Pretty furball protected information.
Yeah, yeah, and we had discussed that too and just, you know, knowing that we, that's a tough, that's, one moment, please. That's a tough label and so we just wanna be really sensitive to that. But because of, you know, that experience that we wanted to be able to hear back from folks and how those circumstances. Could be, could be met and could be sort of supported by, by what the, what the plan includes.
And I did have a question for maybe around the thinking for that S R two funding around, because that came up a lot around the summer program. And. And if that is a good thought right now.
We're actually, we actually have a lot of money left over from the S R two. Line, budget line for summer programming, so that's an S R two, not a S R three.
But for the intervention now for like the summer.
We haven't talked about intervention, it's not something that's happened before, Mount Kilir Roxbury, I'll tell you. It, there's a lot of research that says it has to be done in a certain way for a certain length of time in order to have any kind of impact on students. I go back and forth if we want our own teachers to do that kind of work, our own teachers are burnt out. And that's their time to relax, so I even.
Unless they're working a second job.
Some do, yeah, but. And often that second job is kind of fun, right? Yeah, switching gears and all that kind of stuff, so. Um, I go back and forth on it.
Because there's something that we can ask them so that we won't. So, I mean, it, it's not even the, so the question, so two questions, one question is whether it's our teachers. Two question, this second question is like, do we, do we have a program? And then we ask all the teachers in our districts to serve our kids while we're being really structured. So just like, just a question I have around some of that summer intervention and what's coming. Especially because now all this summer camps are coming up and people are. Then.
I think there's lots of different perspectives on, on that piece. And so, not sure, right now it's not dedicated to intervention services. To enrichment opportunities.
Six years of my school coming up. How to catch up.
Yeah, it's kind of, the idea of catch up is arbitrary as well.
Can I add something, because I realized I sent something to Kristen last week, but I wanted to add this on. It was based on the question she asked and it pertains to funding for some things that we've talked about the past couple of weeks. Recreational cannabis is set to, that market is set to open this year. And six percent of all recreational campus sales are to be used in law. For after school and summer education programs and. In F Y twenty five, once the market has ramped up more, it's forecasted to generate between roughly four million and eleven million dollars a year. That's the sales tax component of cannabis sales. I just want the folks to know that's the first talk about money for after school and summer program in the past two weeks. I realize I just sent that to Kristen already.
Yeah, I'd be for the summer programming, we've never done it before, so, and we're not a twenty one C district. So the, the challenge is, is that we don't have a position to run summer programming. So that's what, you know, if we got extra money to do that, that would be awesome. Because we have a very limited slate of actors who are working in the summer. Right now, so Matt Lang ran our sports camps last year and he's ready to do so again this year. But, you know, he's running sports camps because that's his thing, he's the athletic director. If we want to do other things or the board wants us to do other things, then we need to, we, we would need to hire a physician to do that.
Yeah, and I have to look in law, the law says how that money is to be, there's like some structure, it's, it's loose though. It might just be like an A O E, an A O E grant program or something along those lines, I can't remember. It wasn't so bad. Yeah, that's helpful. Know that money's being well spent.
It could potentially in the future.
Yeah, exactly. So now the long awaited finance video update. And I could take it.
Giving up there, okay.
You were the one who wasn't looking at anybody else.
Yeah, I was looking at my computer. I thought that was a safe, safe thing to do. All right, well, we. Have the audit report that I guess we, we got it or we're getting. Just to summarize that and. Just to, I guess, kind of being a conduit from Grant to you guys, we've had a very successful audit. The report's been fantastic, the team, Grant and his folks have done a fantastic job. There have not been any corrections or I don't know the exact language, Grant, but. Finance findings, yeah, there are four or five things that, that were listed and Grant went to each one of them and they were. We were satisfied with the reasoning and. What Grant had told us, so all in all, just a very successful. Art report. As far as the quarter four final twenty twenty one quarter four final. Report, there were no changes that we needed to make or we made, so it. The budget number, we were ninety nine, is it ninety six point three one percent? In terms of expenditures and ninety nine point five percent in terms of revenue. We, the, the surplus was a little more than what we had anticipated, which is a, in a way, a good thing. And there were. Various reasons for it, but they all made sense and then finally moving on to the quarter two twenty twenty two. Numbers, we are, the expenditures are. Almost in line with what we think, there were a couple of categories which we were, we are a little higher than what we thought we would be. And, and a couple of them lower. Again, I, I can go into details, but all within reason and all of what we anticipate will be similarly revenues. We were expecting about fifty two, averaging fifty two and a half percent in terms of overall numbers at this point. And we are at actually that's fifty one point nine four, so they're very close to where we would like to be. Grant or anybody else, Joe, have I missed anything?
And it all is in your, is it, it is in our package.
Yeah, and one of the things of the, the audit is we need to have received the letter, that's what we, we need to acknowledge. That we have received that letter and the package. That's it.
So we do need a motion to approve.
The, the two financial statements.
Yeah.
Great, well, any, any questions on the presentation before we? Do I have a motion to approve?
No question.
Motion to approve the, do you do two separate motions or can you do laws one? Let's do this to, to be. Extra, extra careful, motion for the F Y twenty one fourth quarter financial report. Second.
I'm second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? And a motion to approve the F Y twenty two second quarter financial report. Don't move. We'll dig up there, any discussion? All's in favor? Great, so now we can, we need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of appointing committee members to the. Visioning committee and I guess a question, can we bring Nathan? Do we want to bring Nathan in as a consultant, which I think we're allowed to do?
The purpose would be to discuss candidates.
Yeah, I, I would suggest bringing Nathan in. Did he have to discuss the appointment of candidates and then we will come back out of this. So do I have a motion for that?
Oh, discuss it.
Yeah. Do I have a second? Favor? And opposed, great.
So we need to make that motion again, okay?
I or, or we?
You, you make, you move.
Then someone second. Sigrid Olsen. Melissa Hauser, Kena Muncy. Caitlin Brower. And Dottie Guefree as adults, community representatives to the visioning committee. Ford and. Joe.
Carol.
Carol as staff slash faculty. Esther Lee Carlson, Kale Ellingson. Merrick Modune. Amira Lewis. Elliot Muller. Emery Richardson, Amelia Woodard. And Carmen Richardson Skinder as student representatives. And Amanda as a board representative.
And did you get Joe and?
Yeah, all to the visioning committee.
This I can do.
Hi. All those in favor?
I am in favor, can you oppose, sorry, I was.
I second that.
All those in favor? Great, thank you, everyone.